I call the Alton Budget Committee meeting to order for January 10th at 6:00. Do the roll call.
Lynda Guzims?
Lynda Guzims?
Mark DeKoff.
Steve Miller.
Barbara Howard.
Lauren Capp.
Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Got the agenda in front of you. It's a public hearing for the school board budget and warrants and then we'll adjourn the public hearing after to have a budget committee meeting. Does anything need to be added to this agenda because there's stuff in this warrant articles we haven't even looked at in this, right? Like a teacher's contract.
Teacher's contract. I think that's the only one you haven't looked at.
Was there warrant articles changed at all?
There was one deleted and two deleted, right? Two deleted.
I have some questions to the school board member about attendance.
I have a couple clarification things on the towns.
I can't hear you.
I have a few corrections on the towns. Not corrections. Information on some town.
Town budget?
Your warrant articles, yeah.
We'll do that when we go into our regular budget committee meeting.
Yep.
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Do you want to just start right in the?
When do you want to do the?
We'll do that. We'll do the tenants when we go in our regular budget committee because this is the public hearing so I don't want to. I don't want to deal with that stuff. Right. So you want to start right in the? This is the revenue. I have to read this revenue into the record. So for our estimated 2012-13 revenue for unreserved funds is $599,968. If I make a mistake, just mention it. School building aid is estimated at $432,055. Castorstrophic aid is estimated at $30,000 with a subtotal on the state sources of $462,055. Then you go to federal sources. Federal grants is $100,000. Medicaid is $50,000. Child nutrition is $87,541 with a total of $237,541. Next is local sources. Earnings on investment is $2,000. Food service is $156,842 with a total on local sources of $158,842. And total non-tax revenues is $1,458. $1,458,406, sorry. Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
The school building aid, $432,000. How do we get school building aid? I thought it was cut off, so.
No, that's, this will be the final year for the Prospect Mountain High School.
Okay.
That's correct.
The next question is $100,000 on federal grants. Do we have $100,000 on matching federal grants?
We have to. We have to have $100,000 in our revenue and $100,000 in our operating budget.
Do we expect $100,000 in federal grants?
Yes, we do.
Okay. How much do we expect total?
I can't tell you. I can tell you which grants. Title I, IDEA preschool grant. I know that Title II-A, there's thought of it disappearing, but I haven't heard.
Are all these in excess of $100,000?
Yes, they are.
That's all I need to know.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to comment. On that building aid, I think that's confusing where you have a building project proposal. Wouldn't it be better to have like a slash JMA to clarify that?
If you'd like a notation down the bottom to say that's part of the Prospect Mountain High School debt schedule, then.
I mean, the first thing I think everybody thought was that's, we don't have any, so why is it there, so.
A notation for Prospect Mountain's final year as well, just so that PMHS.
Have to be a notation or can it just say it right there so that way they're reading it instantaneously?
Sure.
Eliminate confusion.
All right. Now we can go right into the school budget. We'll do it by account and then we'll ask for any public input. So we start in the 1100?
Can I just bring to your attention that there is a whole nother aspect of the health and the dental that I have, the cost savings that you have not voted on. So that'll be something that'll need to be voted on tonight as we go through each function.
Okay. So do you want to look at that first in the 1100 account?
Sure. If you'd want to do it that way, that's all right for everyone.
You have copies for everybody?
I can make copies if you'd like.
Are you just going to give us the bottom line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, I can tell you by each function, like right now, we're starting with 1100. The combined amount to decrease out of 1100 for health and dental would be $29,114.
$29,114?
That's correct.
Okay. $46,117. Minus 933. Minus 29114.
Let's just see if she has the number already.
Do you already, well, I want to check. Do you already have the number for that line?
Nope, not yet.
So it goes down to $17,936?
Oh, are you going to go line by line? I'm sorry. I thought we were going by the function, just.
Oh, I am. I'm at. Oh, so that's the total. The total.
Yes, between health and dental. Just take that right off of the 1100 bottom line.
Off the bottom line. Okay. That's my mistake.
No. Just however you want to go about doing it is fine by me, the procedure.
Take 29114. All right. So for the 1100 account, the only line for, or the 1140 account, or no, 1100, sorry, my mistake. For salary, we took out $2,400, which was the Saturday AM.
Correct. Intervention.
And then we had some FICA adjustment.
Which you'll have to vote into the meeting minutes, yep.
New Hampshire retirement.
Mm-hmm. You see those lines on the, you're looking at that, yep. 18360 and then 21120. Yep. Okay. Good.
So that's, the only thing we reduced was the AM detention in that account?
Yes, it is.
Is there any public input on that? Nope. Do you want to?
We vote afterwards.
Okay. We'll go to the 1140 account. So how much is this one for health?
Health and dental. For this one, you just have to subtract $399.
$399. Dental. So under this one, we reduce the salary in the technology assistant by $8,882 down. And then we reduced all the new computers and was that, we were going to reduce it to zero, but was asked to leave the two servers in. Linda was there, so we left the two servers in. And that's the only things we reduced in there.
Correct.
Other than we have to do some health and dental.
FICA and.
Yep.
Retirement. Correct.
So any public input on that?
I don't think this is going to work.
Why?
Because the public's got this paper right here and they're following this number and we just told them, well, it's $399. So we're not really telling them what the budget numbers are. And that's what this hearing is for. I think we've got to tell them the numbers. I don't think we can just tell them.
Okay. So at the end?
I think we've got to come up with the numbers.
All right.
Start with the 1100 account.
I'll go back to the 1100.
Just take your time.
Start with what we have.
Well, we're passing, this is the document we're passing out to the public, right?
Yep.
But that doesn't include the $29,000. We have to take $29,000 off of this line that says budget committee?
That's what I'm saying. Should he read off the, what we're at right now, what we need to subtract and then a new total? Is that workable?
What about New Hampshire retirement?
You'll go back and vote or how do you want to go ahead and do this?
We have to disclose it to the public.
Absolutely.
On a line by line basis.
Are you going to vote tonight to take the FICA and the retirement off? I guess that's what I'm asking. So I know where.
At the end of the day, but we have to present at least a bottom line figure that was presented to us.
Okay.
That's the very least we have to do.
I see what you're saying. You say make a warrant, motion. So if we take the 29114 off of the.
3 million?
3208990. We should come up with the correct number. I get 3179876.
I do. I concur.
Does that include the retirement?
No, because you haven't voted that yet.
Doesn't include the retirement? So we have to take off that too?
There, because there was a salary reduction already that was approved by your vote previously. I have calculated what the FICA and the retirement would be and that has to be voted upon as well. So it's like a second part to the salary reduction.
Okay. So how much would that be to take off that, you know?
Yep. For 1100 account, the total for the FICA and the retirement would be subtract $394.80.
Right. 395.
Were you directed by the school board at all to give us, to give the public a bottom line number on their school board recommendation? I know you didn't know what our number is because we didn't vote on it.
What I did was I followed what I thought was the best procedure was the last known public meeting votes.
Okay.
So those were the last and I have the meeting that it was, or the decision, the vote was taken for what were the bottom line numbers for the school board. I have not included the health or the dental decreases and neither have I stuck or put in a number for Prospect Mountain because neither this budget committee nor our school board have officially voted on what number for Prospect Mountain. This is, this is unlike what I'm used to dealing with. So I get very antsy at not having definitive numbers that are board approved, written into, you know, are minutes from a meeting. So bear with me if I get a little crazed. But those are the last approved numbers from this board and from the school board.
So it's 3,179,876 with the health and dental taken out?
Correct.
Do you think that the budget committee will be able to vote because we have all the numbers today?
That all depends upon you. I mean, I'm here to calculate what you need to do.
We can vote, but will we have all the elements of each line to vote on today?
I don't know that that's a question for me. I'm here to do any calculation I need to based on your decisions to vote what in, what out.
We've got everything we need, I think.
You got the retirement numbers?
Yeah. I supplied the document.
That came today?
No, that was two weeks ago.
That's the sheet I handed out to you.
Okay. I didn't have, obviously I didn't have a chance to look.
Right there.
Look at it.
Okay.
Look at the sheet. Okay.
So for the 1100, we got to take out another 18360 and 21120. Correct?
3948.
Linda has it.
That's on the. So it's 3,179,481.20.
Around the 1140 account.
Yes. I concur.
All right. What? Got a question?
I just don't. It seems like the handouts to the public ought to have the correct number in it. It's like we're giving handouts saying this is what our number is. These are all prefinalized numbers, but we're not giving out the prefinalized number. How is public going to give us information if they're not having the number in front of them?
I concur with Lauren.
It's like.
The very least, the school board proposed number should have been finalized and handed in at this time so we don't have to, you know, add and subtract and hope it's right and look back and find out we're off by 20 cents or something like that.
All right. The board's numbers, the board's number at this point, the budget committee has not taken action on some of these other items on a vote.
Right.
So Kathy was unable to do anything. If it's not voted.
I'm not going to put it in.
Kathy is not going to put it in because she's making a supposition that is what the budget committee wants. But that's not an appropriate thing for our office to do, to make a supposition as to what this body wants. You didn't take action on this budget in some areas, so Kathy cannot make those calculations.
But when we were going over the salaries, we said, okay, we have to adjust the FICA and the retirement and you people said, yeah, we'll do that, so.
And she did that. But you have not voted.
She didn't vote on it.
You did not vote on it.
We said, we, for instance, vote on this number with the accompanying reductions in all benefits. That wasn't word for word, but that was essentially what we said, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, so that.
The budget committee has not voted on the budget in order for us to then say this is the final number for.
Tonight's meeting.
Tonight's meeting.
But if all, if, if it was said.
I'm not trying to stonewall you. It's a very difficult thing.
And, you know, we're going to hope these numbers are right after we make, after we make all these deductions and if we vote on a wrong number, what happens then? If we're off by $10 or $100 or $1,000 because two people added wrong?
Steve, I understand your frustration because I feel it as well. I have felt it and I've been very anxious about this evening. I think the last year when we went through the budget process, even during the public hearing, I believe you and I went during a break after all the votes.
Yes.
Were made to deduct certain amounts out of certain functions. You and I separately made those deductions and came together and found that we had the same correct number.
Came into the hearing, it was all done.
Right.
No, no. We did it during the hearing. We did do some of this during.
We did it at the SOU office.
But you came to the SOU.
The prior votes, some prior votes, absolutely. We wanted to make sure we still were on the same page with what had been voted. But there were final votes the evening of the public hearing and we did work together to make sure we had the same bottom line.
And you had the opportunity after the public hearing to make your final votes and I remember that you very clearly stated prior, I don't remember exactly when you said it, every vote we're taking now is a pre-vote.
Right.
So I'm, we're very clear on that. But Kathy's been struggling with, they haven't voted, they haven't voted, we're not sure of their final votes. And I said, then you can't do anything. It's a final vote.
So when did you find out about the health insurance being able to be reduced?
The health insurance came.
December 1st.
December 1st. And we had already had the bulk of our meetings. The last meeting we had was all to do with warrant articles.
Well, you know, not having any representation to bring a message to us to, you know.
Well, I was here, so I could have.
To work a little more in a more of a collaborative effort. That doesn't help anybody, does it? Especially the public.
All right. Well, I say move on the way we're going.
We don't have any choice. We're coming down to the wire based on the lib, the date of.
Hey, so for the 1100 account, I've got $3,179,481.20.
Yes, I have the same number.
Okay. We're going to go to the 11, 1,140 count. Technology. And that one for the handout to the public needs the $399 taken out of it, correct?
$49.
399.
399 for dental.
399.
Did you?
So that comes out to 245878. Right? Or did I do it wrong? I did it wrong.
I didn't get that.
I might have did.
246.
246, 323.
Yep.
Correct.
So the lines that were reduced was the technology assistant and we just left the servers in there. Any public? Huh?
Did you take out FICA too?
The FICA and the retirement for that salary line equals $1,461.09.
How much? 9 cents?
Correct.
Minus 1461. So it's 244861. And 91 cents, correct?
Say the number again. 2?
244861 and 91 cents.
Yes, I have that same number.
Next line. Special ed. So is there health insurance? We got to?
Yes. I need a straight line. Combined total to be subtracted out of the 1200 special education function would be
That's just health insurance?
And dental.
Health and dental.
Health and dental.
And FICA?
There was no salary reductions that needed any attention.
Okay.
We didn't do anything to that account?
So how's health insurance reduced?
They got, you got a new cost for health insurance. That's why it's less, correct?
Correct. No increase. Welcome, Virgil. Nice to see you.
Around 1,200.
So for that account, it's $1,650,98. Is that what you got?
16500.
98. Correct.
Any input on that? The special ed extended year, 1205. We didn't do anything to that?
No. Correct.
Next.
Public input.
Oh. Any public input on that one? Nope. The next one is 1280, which we did not do anything to that, but is there health insurance that needs to be done to that?
Yes, there is. Yep.
Or enrichment. Yes, sorry. $1,994 for health and dental?
Correct.
So. Subtract. Correct. So $191,447?
Yes, I have that too.
191.
447.
Got it.
Any public input on that? Next one is the 1410 account, co-curricula. We did not do anything to that. There's no reductions that need to be done there, right?
Correct.
Any public input on that? Nope. 1420, student athletics. That was not touched. Any input on that? Public input?
No health and dental on that.
Nope. Summer school, which is 1430. The budget committee did reduce the salary line on that.
Yep.
And left it the, pretty much the same to what it was the adopted budget plus $400. So we reduced it, what was it, 300 bucks from what the school board wanted?
Correct. And I have some FICA and retirement for that. The total for FICA and retirement to be taken out is $56.85.
$56.85?
Correct.
So $16,412.15?
Yes, I agree.
Any public input on that? Next one. 2120 guidance. Our 20, did I skip one?
Oh, 211020, sorry.
We have insurance in there that needs to be reduced?
Yes, we do. For $2,905.
Could you say that again?
$2,905.
Budget committee didn't do anything with this account. Minus 295. So $215,112.83? Is that what you came up with?
Yes, I have it rounded up to 13, but yes.
What was that again, Mike?
2,000, or $215,112.83. Any public input? 2130, health services. Is there health insurance there that needs to be reduced?
There is. There's $434 to be reduced.
And was there any FICA because we took out the substitute?
Yes, there was. There was just FICA for $66.94.
So it's $90,807.06? That's not.
No, you went the wrong way. I think you added it back in.
Oh, did I? It was 434 and 6694, right?
That's correct.
Do you always just round, round the way you should or is it just rounded up or rounded? Do you always just round, round the way you should, or is it just rounded up or rounded down?
I'm not looking at the- I'm looking at the public handout, which is a rounded-
Oh, I didn't take out the, okay, I didn't-
And I'm not sure what Mark is looking at, so I'm going-
So when you publish it, are you gonna round up or round down?
It depends, it depends on what document that's going out to the public. If it's software-driven, it's gonna have the cents in it, it's not gonna be rounded.
So it's $89,932.06?
Correct.
So the only thing the budget committee reduced out of that was the substitute?
Line, that's correct, for 800.
Okay, any public input on that? Nope. Next one is 2150, which is speech services. Is there health insurance in, nothing in there, right?
No, there is not.
So the budget committee didn't do anything to that. Any public input on that? 2210, improvement of instruction. So the budget committee added $4,000 to that for paraprofessionals for schooling. Correct?
Correct.
Any public input on that?
What's the, so what's the number?
It's the number right here, 72826.
You have to announce it for the record.
So the number is $72,826. Next is 2220 is library and media. Budget committee voted to bonaply on that budget to last year's. Is there any?
Yes, health and dental that needs to come out.
How much is that?
$556.
$556? So $120,403?
That's what I have, correct.
Any public input? 2310, school board. Reduce the legal line in that. Correct?
Correct.
So any, nothing else needs to be reduced in there, right?
No, that's correct.
So it's the $53,010?
Correct.
Any public input? Next line, 2320, SAU expenses.
That has health and dental as well. So you need to subtract out $1,252.
So $231,194?
Correct.
We took $2,500 out of advertisement, and we took $1,500 out of tuition and conferences. That's what the budget committee did in this.
I had $1,000 out of tuition and-
Oh, yep. My mistake. So. Any public input? Principal's office, 2410.
You're gonna skip Prospect Mountain?
For now, yeah.
2330?
I don't even have it on this list that was handed out. I'll skip it for now. We'll come back to that. So 2410?
Yep, we have health and dental to take out, $2,580.
The only thing we reduced in that was the secretary's overtime.
Yep, so there'll be FICA and retirement too, just as soon as I get the number here. Sorry, I didn't calculate it, I'll calculate it right now.
It's just 7.5% of the FICA, right? Of the salary?
Yeah. And the New Hampshire retirement as well, so let me- Who's plan?
Think I calculated it.
So both the FICA and the retirement comes to $82.25.
Could you repeat that, please?
The FICA and the retirement comes to $82.25. You're welcome.
So, it's 300, you done yet?
Almost. Go ahead, new bottom line. Correct.
Please repeat.
Any public input on that? 2510, business services. That's got health insurance, right?
Yes, health and dental, it's $1,123 to take out.
Budget committee didn't do anything with this line, this section?
No.
Yep?
Why is, oh, it's at 237. Why are we at 351?
What do you?
The book that we went through.
What, what about it? Yeah?
We're at 237. We're at 351 on these?
Where are you at? Which line are you at?
The total in my book. For the function, 2410.
24, well, we already moved from there, okay.
I thought we were just doing 2410.
No, we just did, we're doing 2510. Do you wanna go back to that?
No.
Okay.
That's where I messed up right there. I didn't realize you would skip it over.
No, we already did it.
No big deal.
So. $116,762?
Yep, correct.
No, this is business services, 2510.
Back up.
Wait a minute, let's get, let's get this one first.
$116,000.
Yep.
Got it there.
762.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, any public input on that one?
11785.
All right, so you're going back to 2410?
2410, yes.
Okay.
And you had?
That was after the dental and the FICA.
After we reduced the secretarial, or the FICA, yeah, the FICA.
Okay. No, you're right, I was on the wrong, I was on the wrong call.
All right, so 2510 we did. 2600?
We have health and dental to take out of $4,420.
4420?
That's correct. And we do have FICA. And retirement after that.
Yeah.
The FICA and the retirement is a total of $3,330.41 to be taken out.
So it's $799,236.59?
Yes, I have that same number.
And the budget committee in this section reduced a halftime custodian by 13177. The New Hampshire retirement, you adjusted, which was 2338.
Yes.
Repairs in heating, we took out $10,000. Repairs for the truck, we took out $10,000. And then for fuel, we took it down from $162,500 to $146,250. Yeah, the truck?
I thought it was 2.
$2,000.
Yeah, we reduced it by 2.
You said 10.
I said 10.
No, I said heat and repair.
It was by 20.
You reduced, oh, we reduced it by 20, sorry. Okay. And then furniture new, we reduced that to 0.
Correct.
And then equipment replacement, we reduced that to $3,812, correct?
Yep, which was taking out 1,180.
Yeah, we bonaply, or we went with the same budget of the last year. So which, with the reductions you gave us, gives a grand total of $799,236.59.
I had 99 cents, you said 99 cents.
Oh, did I, sorry.
Yeah.
Any public input? Run to the 2700 account. That's $364,601.05 for transportation. We didn't do anything to that. Any public input?
That's not what they see, they see this one.
They've got this, don't they?
Yep, they have that too, they have the summary sheet.
That's your basic transportation. Then you've got your special ed transportation, which is $171,280. And then you've got your athletics transportation, which is $13,760.50. And then you have your three field trips of $11,500.
I got a question, will you round all these up in this? You voting on rounded up or the book?
Typically, I think we've always-
Just round them up?
Yep, yep.
Up or down?
Well, anything 50 and above goes up, anything-
50 cents and down, we go down. Let's get every penny we can on it.
Any public input under transportation? So now we need to subtract all this stuff for our grand total, right?
Food, you don't have food services.
Huh?
You have food services.
Well, I've got my subtotal, I'd rather get my subtotal right now.
Okay.
Excuse me.
No, not yet.
I hope I didn't make a mistake.
Why don't you add them up? You got five people adding them up. I made this dead. I said Georgia, you're the president.
Huh?
You're the president, you're Georgia. How easy being the president of a corporation.
While we're waiting. Yeah. The, oh, you, well, we, it was, in our last meeting, we did some reductions, and then we waited for the FICA and all that. We didn't, we didn't vote on that, so we didn't have those numbers. And then they had health insurance that wasn't reduced. So that's why we're correcting it now. Is that good enough, or?
They, they had the numbers, they said on 12-1 on December 1st, and since then, we've had 1-2. This is the third meeting, and we still haven't got the numbers. So we can't do anything, until we know what the FICA numbers are and the benefits are, we can't do a thing.
They're just, they're just giving them to us now.
Well, no, this is my fault for the FICA, because I got those last week from Kathy.
But, but the issue is that what gets voted is what gets changed.
Right.
And the budget committee has not finalized their budget, and it's just been, they've been very busy with the Warren articles, et cetera, and it just never came to a vote. And Kathy cannot bring forward to a public hearing a number that is not voted. That's not to say that the budget committee is not gonna vote again, or that the public can't listen to what's going on here. To make sure that you, you have every opportunity to listen to the numbers of what's going on. But to bring forward a number that has not been voted by this budget committee would be a supposition. But to bring forward a number that has not been voted by this Budget Committee would be a supposition on the part of our business administrator making an assumption of some changes in a public document that has not been voted. They, they're.
Only temporary voted on numbers. And these are the changes that we need to approve at the end of this meeting, after public input.
It wasn't a case of being busy, it wasn't a case of having all the last numbers, that's all.
I had the numbers. I did, I stated to you, I had the numbers. It was, the next meeting was Warren Articles.
Right.
Please, I don't want to be the one reflected that I didn't have numbers.
There's nobody to blame.
I'm sorry then if I misunderstood you, I thought that you were saying I did not have the numbers for you.
Numbers back and forth.
Kathy, there's nobody to blame, it's just how to do in the business with the budgets. I mean, this is how it worked out.
It does take time.
All right, is that good?
And, and it's important for the, it's important for the public to know that this is your opportunity to give input as to whether you.
Agree with what we did.
Agree with what the Budget Committee is doing, what the Board has done, whether, what's going on with the dollar amount here.
Yeah, we've done the same thing with the town, it always seems to work out this way.
I have, why don't you read me?
Seven million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty cents?
I don't have that, that's why I think I.
No, I could be wrong.
I know, I could be wrong, I can.
Did somebody else add it up?
Yeah, it didn't come up right.
I had eight million, one thirty-seven, but, keep going.
Take the average, scratch it off.
Yeah, just make it an even seven. You can't make it an even seven.
You know what I can do?
No, the Budget Committee has not voted on and approved. Welcome to our meeting.
Wait, this is the first time we've seen the numbers, right?
Yep. Welcome to our meeting.
For the record, this is the first time we saw that we've heard the insurance numbers, period.
I think I'm going to be close to the number now.
What number did you get?
It's eight million.
Yeah.
Eight million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents? What do you got?
I added up all the minuses. I came up with eight-one-four-zero-one-eight-nine.
What, Mark, what number did you have again?
Eight million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents? No?
What are you getting?
I got eight million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two fifty-three point eighty-six, and I got it twice.
You have three numbers.
All right, so, eleven hundred account is three million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents?
Maybe that was where I went wrong.
Go with Kathy's number.
Go with hers.
It's the lowest.
She's the business administrator.
Right.
Just go with that number, because she's probably right.
Mark, was that three million, one seventy-nine, four eighty-one, and twenty?
Twenty cents is what I had, I'm just making sure.
That's the one where I'm off by, I think.
Right?
Yep.
Is that what you had?
Yep.
Okay, and then?
Read them off.
The eleven forty account?
Uh huh.
Is two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents?
Correct.
Okay. The twelve hundred account?